Senator.
Hey, it is nine o'clock and I'll call the the meeting of the cutting County Board of Commissioners to order. And I think it's my turn to lead the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, number two on the agenda, call for public comment, public comment can maybe submitted in person or by telephone at these two numbers. Six oh five eight eight two six two four eight or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. Are there any conflict of interest items on the agenda for any of the commissioners? And one for me. Waiting on for Mr. Partman stepped up for a second. Is there a number four action to approve today's agenda? Motion by Johnson, second by Schwer. Any, I think we, I think we will have a need for an exec, but I'm not not totally sure about that, but it's like we probably will. Any other comments hearing none? Oh, and just note that Comster Van Dusen is is not here today. Hearing no, no comments, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Also, no, that motion carries and then number five motion to or.
So move.
Someone by Schwer second by Johnson to approve last week's minutes. Any additions or corrections? During none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Let's say no, that motion carries. Okay, and number six, we have an update from those Kenfield and those Christianson from the Boys and Girls Club on the. Juvenile or our youth diversion or juvenile detention alternative initiative program, so.
Yes. Good morning, commissioners. Hi, how are you? Yep, this is a, one of my goals is to try to get to one of the meetings more consistently to let you know how how numbers are looking as far as juveniles go in detention as well as referrals to youth diversion, so. That's my attempt today, not I don't have any major highlights, but I would like to go through where our current numbers lie and see if you have any questions. But as far as the detention numbers for for juveniles in the detention center. As I've mentioned in previous meetings, ever since we've put in juvenile justice reform back in twenty seventeen, we've made some significant changes. To the average daily population for juveniles, so you'll see currently for two thousand three, we're sitting at under one juvenile in detention. As of today, there should detention center should be empty for for juvenile, so we'd like to keep it that way, and hopefully we can keep it that way for for a while here.
So what the what the just for people who are watching, you know, we're talking about a diversion, you know, goals, the goal is to keep. You know, kids juveniles out of out of jail, basically. And so we have a program of diversion that that that's really the active part of this, and then the end result was we want to keep people out of jail, so particularly juveniles. If we can, and so the the average is less than one, one juvenile, that's what the that's what people are looking at.
Exactly, the average is less than one juvenile, there are kids that are pending adjudication, so they they, you know, prior to twenty seventeen, they would be in detention right now, but they're. We're doing a conditional release, meaning instead of being in detention and waiting for their adjudication date. Based on the way they score on their risk assessment instrument. They've deemed appropriate to be out of detention back in school somewhere an ankle monitor. Believe there's, there's two youth right now that are on a conditional release that have been doing just that. Following through with the guidelines that they re- required of them. And then that also has made an impact on our average length of stay at the detention center for the youth. It was nearly eight days when a juvenile was arrested until they were able to go into the, you know, in front of the court. And have their adjudication. Now with the conditional release options and other other factors, we've got that down to just, just around two days is the average length of stay for a juvenile. Significantly more kids are diverted, so you know, we're sitting at a hundred and ninety cases have been referred to our program in this. Year, which started July one, so if you look at the comparison from previous years. You know, we we made some changes here in fiscal year twenty one, and obviously we've we've seen an increase in cases. The big jump there you see from fiscal year twenty two to twenty three is tobacco. Prior to youth getting diversion for tobacco, they would be tried or charged as an adult. They would go pay a fee and that was pretty much it, so we've instilled diversion for for these cases. And we had well over a hundred this last year of kids coming through for tobacco, and really when we say tobacco, it's vape, it's ninety nine percent of them are are kids that are vaping. Oftentimes at school. So a highlight on that, which I don't know if is on here is. When we started taking those cases, September of last year, this the school year, we were seeing twenty four and twenty two cases in a month that were referred. We've got that down to four and five. A year apart, so we've made, you know, project success program at the high schools are really big factor as far as how those how we've we've made impact on those numbers. Questions at this.
I just want to make a comment, so so you see the numbers might to some people might look kind of high, but it's most of these. Offenses are not the kind you'd put a kid in jail for, so it's not like being soft on crime approach, it's more of a nip it in the bud.
Exactly.
So you're 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 instead of just getting letting him get away with just paying a quick fine, saying let's let's work on that behavior, and that's what diversion is about, so. The kid avoids a criminal record, but on the other hand, they still have to, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, or they but they still have to with, you know, with the agreement of the state's attorney. But they still have to go through some 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 kind of program to work on whatever the problem is, so.
I agree, and I would argue that they're going to get more more support and and more tasks to do if they go through diversion. And to give you an idea of the types of cases that we're seeing, if you go to the next slide.
I have a question.
Oh, sure, certainly.
Yeah, I don't know, it doesn't make any difference, I guess, but just a question. Are you finding the offenses primarily in the high school or middle school? Do you have any way of separate where where the numbers coming from?
Yeah, I do track every every, you know, juvenile and age and school location, but without showing you the that. That chart, it's it's definitely high school, you know, ninth and tenth grade seem to be the the primary areas. Yeah, that that transition from eighth to ninth, I I see.
New beginning.
A new new beginning, new friends, I'm not sure what it is, but they're getting a little bit more risky in their behaviors. But that's that's definitely where we see it. Yep. And then the types of cases cases as Commissioner Gable was mentioning is the next slide there. Alcohol is really made made a rise this year. So we're. This is our top, top case referrals thirty you'll see is alcohol. And then any kind of marijuana, whether it's possession, ingesting or paraphernalia is is tied there at thirty, so that continues to be an issue. But one thing we're we're keeping an eye on is that simple assault at twenty seven. Which is trending significantly higher than than the previous year. Not sure why that is, but that's we're keeping our eye on that and we're we're strategizing ideas with our our collaborative to try to. Try to nip that one. Yeah, and that's just, you know, kids fighting, you know, kids, kids responding aggressively for for minor situations and escalating them. Yeah, so not not sure, don't have a great answer as to what's going on, but we're gonna, we're gonna try to identify it. And come up with some solutions. And then, of course, tobacco and vape at twenty six, which last year it was off the charts, so I like to see that that's been trending downward. Truancy continues to be be a concern. And then so on and so forth. So, next one. Yeah, and then I just listed some of the ideas, just to give you an idea of what what happens when a juvenile goes through diversion, what are some some ways we respond? So I'm not going to read all these to you, but. You know, for example, like like we were talking to alcohol, juvenile gets caught consuming alcohol underage. We're going to get them a screening, try to determine how often they're using alcohol, if it's a serious issue. And then that's going to be done by a professional at the Human Service Agency. And then they determine what their recommendation is in addition to what I add as their diversion plan, so it could, it's it's going to definitely be school attendance. So we'll we'll monitor their school attendance and behavior at school, likely going to be some community service, there's going to be fees attached to that. And then that recommendation from the screener could be, could be an online program, it could be a group session at school. Could be behavioral health evaluation and and mental health services, so there's a variety of ways we can respond. When when juveniles offend, which is, I think, the good part about this, this program is that we get to be very creative and try to. To, you know. Change the plan accordingly to whatever the need is of the student. And then I just listed a couple of areas of focus, and I think I already hit on these, but the rise in simple assaults, just to give you a comparison, we have, we have twenty seven so far, which is July through October. Last year alone, we had thirty eight, and that was for a full year, so I'll just give you an idea of of how much higher we're trending. And then the other area, major area focus is truancy. Oftentimes when a juvenile is truant from school, it's not just because they don't want to go, there's there's usually something else going on. And we're, we're trying to get them connected to a mental health professional to determine what that is and try to get them some support to get back on track.
Questions for Lewis.
Thank you for the information.
Yep.
Very good.
You're welcome.
Really good rundown.
Appreciate your time.
Yeah, thanks for coming in.
Yep, thank you.
Keep having good work.
Thanks, Louis. Thanks, Louis. All right. Next up. monthly reports. Got to monitor.
All right, good morning. So the lobby calculations for taxes payable in twenty twenty four have been submitted to the South Dakota Department of Revenue. And then I and another staff member attended the election school. A couple of weeks back presented by the South Dakota Secretary of State. And also starting to keep an eye on some of the year end budgets and watching. Monitoring them. If there's, keep them in compliance, so other than that. That's about it for me. See, have any questions?
Any questions? Right, Shauna. Director of Equalization. Good morning.
Morning, Shauna.
So we are currently working on getting all of our October sales worked through our system up through the end of October. And then we will be uploading those and sending them off to the Department of Revenue. And then after they have all of our sales from November one last year to October thirty first this year, they'll schedule our sales audit, we'll. Work through that, they just come and. Go through all of the sales, make sure we're rejecting the right ones, making the right ones good, things like that, so then our ratios are are accurate. The appraisers are out working on building permits right now in the county and the city. And then I'm starting to work on the twenty twenty four assessments for payable twenty five, the adjustments. My intentions are due by the first of the year to the state, and then they look at those to make sure our ratios are compliant with where we're supposed to be. We are sitting a little better this year ratio wise than we were last year, so we won't be looking at as large of increases, which is nice, but there'll still be some, so.
Yeah, and I was on the. Took part in the. The board meeting of the. South Dakota Associated County Commissioners, we're going over legislative priorities, and one of the things that we're talking about is is using a common. You know, computer software programming databases, you know, statewide, I don't, I don't know if that would affect what you're doing as much, I think it might, I don't.
We are, the state is, and I'm not sure if it's the one they're already working on, because it's Oxy Matic, it's a different program that all the counties are sending. Their assessment info to, I'm not, do you guys upload to Oxy Matic too? We're, there's a lot of counties having issues, we're trying to get all the different counties, different software to work on that. So I'm not sure if that's what they're talking about, but.
Yeah, I think that I think that the name sounds familiar, because there's a number of counties on this this system and.
Yep, and so we're trying to get, so they're trying to get everybody to be able to upload, because right now you can go to the Department of Revenue site, you can see sales. But you can't, I mean, you can kind of see the numbers, but you can't really see everything about the sale.
Right.
And so now this new software will will make it easier to.
And that, well, that leads to the other thing is kind of a common picture, if you do need to, if you do need to understand something, especially at the legislative level, you know, like what grabbing data statewide. Can be a challenge if you if you bring it from different systems, and so.
Yeah, so right now they, the legislatures will email each individual individual county and then see if you can do that, and then they have to.
Right.
Yeah, so, yep, this will help in a lot of ways, they're just struggling to get all of the different. Entities and softwares to be able to upload the same info for it to come out, exactly.
But then, yeah, so the tricky thing about it is, though, it doesn't, it sounds like it's a simple thing, but the tricky thing is you don't want to take necessarily control from a county saying, well, if you want to use, if you want to do things in a particular way. That's kind of the tricky part, but it's so that the the debate is kind of like, how do you, how do you make this happen, so you can get the benefits of having one system without.
Yep.
You know, saying too much of what, how to do it.
Yeah, it's a lot of work, like with our connecting point, because they have to. Basically program everything to go into the system and into the software correctly. And so far I have not seen an extra bill, thankfully, from connecting point, they're working very well with us and in not charging us so far, but. We'll see kind of where it goes with all the other vendors and stuff too, so.
Yeah.
They're working on it.
Any questions? Thanks, Shauna.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welfare director, come on down.
Morning, Sarah.
All right, you have my, the chart in front of you, just that's the data.
Wait a second. Do something. Colors. All right.
Okay. Yeah, so our numbers are down a little bit, but again, that doesn't necessarily accurately reflect the work that we do, because intensity can be different, you can have three people. That have a lot of needs, and so. But that's kind of where we're at for the month.
Intensity, intensity graph.
Yeah, we do, I know, I wish we could measure intensity in a, in a better way, I mean, I guess there is a little by frequency, but it's, yeah. So, yeah, a couple more funerals came through, so we're right at the top of the budget, but we might just squeak by. For the year.
What's what's the budget?
I believe it's forty thousand.
Okay. Yeah, well, actually, you look at the the services and the total client contacts, those are up from last month, so, yeah.
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 Right. That is, yeah, so. In the work we're doing, any questions on any of those pieces on any of those numbers? Then I'll jump into the narrative piece, so for the cares ERA, Carrie continues to spend a significant amount of time doing that, she received, we received four thousand dollars in administrative fees for October. From her work with cares. ICAP, we did end that contract, and so Hunter's moved out of our office, and so we're no longer utilizing ICAP for our case management, we're able to manage that on our own. With our staff in the office. Which is through the impact program, our our community health worker program. In October, we were reimbursed six thousand nine hundred and fifty three dollars from the grant for that. Amount, and so that covers all of Paige's. Salary as well as a little bit of carries and a little bit of mine at this point. We're still continuing to work on reimbursement through Medicaid, there was an issue with the, apparently the Medicaid system hasn't been updated since like the nineteen eighties, and so the Z codes that we have to use were. Having issues and we just got noticed this week that they fixed their computer glitch, and so we should start be able to be reimbursed now. Through the, through Medicaid. Carrie, currently Paige has sixteen clients enrolled in Impact, and she was just meeting with another new client, so our goal was to be around fifteen, and we've met that goal, and now we're talking about how do we start. Determining when people pick clients are ready for discharge and to move on and to not need our support. And we are measure, we actually are measuring intensity with her program through that.
Would it be, would it be something you'd want to measure the length of time on the program, is that something that would be helpful?
Yeah, so one of the things, the state has been really great through that grant working with us, and so the. Community, in January, we're going to evaluate the measuring tool, like the measurements that we indicated, we're going to be looking at what kind of the first six months result, like the full. Like now that we have a good six months under our belt.
Right.
What it looks like from that, so that'll be evaluated in January. Yeah. Yes.
And that's that's basically case management.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, it's just intensive case management is what it is, so she's doing a great job. Also, we had a conversation, we met with Matt and Brad, the sheriff and the detention center. About having our community health worker go into the detention center, that was kind of a link that we lost about a year ago, and so we. But we're working on reestablishing that, Perry is actually for the CHW program, she has to do some internship hours, and so she did some yesterday at the detention center, so we're. Building that relationship there and going to start working with inmates to provide some case management there.
And what's what's her schooling again?
She's going to be a, she'll also be a certified community health worker, so it's also through the grant, so the grant covered her schooling.
Yeah.
As well. Yeah. Um, let's see. To, I forgot to write on there, but they go to Huron on Thursday for the regional, the community health worker regional meeting on Thursday, so, and Paige is helping lead that, she has a. She's one of the leaders for that regional meeting, so that's good, too. And then with the office, well, it's on the agenda, but proposing a name change to better reflect the work that we're doing, we can talk about that more when we get to that agenda item, but that's the chart on the back with that. I've just had a lot of different feedback and and actually Liz just that as she was walking out, she was like, I love the idea of changing the name, welfare is such a hard name to sell people to. So the idea of changing my name, so she literally just said that to me as she was walking out. We did partner with that Economic Development Lake Area Tech and Mother of God Monastery on a grant for the Governor's Office of Economic Development for childcare. And so the Economic Development Office is the one that actually submitted that grant, and we just supported the work that we they're doing through the Childcare Action Team. That we have, so that was a great partnership with that.
What was it, so? Provided a lot of support or?
We're, we're a partner with the grant, because that will be through the Childcare Action Team.
Right.
With that.
Okay.
So. Yeah.
Trying to remember, you're doing so much.
I know.
Trying to keep it all straight, so.
It is, yeah, so that's the Childcare Action Team, and so they, we actually partnered with it because we'll help. Facilitate the grant process with that. Yeah. Where I continue to work on the Leading on Purpose course, that leadership course through NACO, that goes through December. And then we did have another request of a student from the Human Services Technician Program at Lake Area Tech who would like to job shadow in our office, I just. Got that, and so we'll put that on the agenda for next week to have a student job shadow with us again. Through that, through the Systems of Care and Strategic Planning. Our interagency meeting, I was actually out of town, and so Angela led the interagency meeting last week, there was about twenty to twenty five that attended again, and medical foundations presented. On that, and so.
Yeah, I listened to, I listened to a little bit of that, so.
Good. Good, yeah, it's helpful to be able to get that information out. I did present at the School in Service Regarding Cuddington Connects and the work that we're doing to work together, and so that was well received from the school, too, had some feedback from some teachers that have some interest in supporting the work as well, so that was great. For Cuddington Connects, our agency of the month this month, the Salvation Army, with all of the holiday work that they're doing, the individual of the month is Darcy Wartek, who's a social worker at Prairie Lakes Healthcare System. And our Community Transformation Group continues to work on the media campaign for Cuddington Connects. I will have a booth for Cuddington Connects at the Goss nonprofit happy hour, you know, at the end of November. And housing, we're still working on putting together a housing summit and strategic plan. Again, economic development will be helping fund that, but we're helping, we're partnering with them to. Put together the strategic planning and housing summit piece of that. And then the childcare grant, oh, I had that twice, I guess, listed that. Yeah. And. Yeah. That. Yeah, that's kind of our route.
Any questions for, sir, are you going to go over the cool chart on the back?
Well, yeah. But that, I mean, we could talk about, we, I could talk about it now, or we can talk about it with a name change.
Oh, that's what, okay, let's wait. Just. Just want to congratulate you on your, you got a nice award from the city.
Yes.
For your, for your services, and so you're, you know, a community, you're a county employee, but a community asset, so.
Yeah.
Congratulations on that, what what was the official title of the award?
Yeah, thank you for bringing it up, it was through the Mayor's Council for Disabilities, it's Distinguished Service Award, so that was a nice honor, and just a reflection of all the work that. Happens because our meaning, community is working together, so, yeah, thank you.
Good job. But any other questions? There, so we got a couple of agenda items that are. That are yours.
Yeah.
I think.
Yeah.
So you want to start, so number eight is discussion of possible action to change the name of the Welfare Office. And then parentheses, it says Cuddington County Community Services.
Yeah.
Sure.
So the reason behind this, I mean, there's been a few things for a long, since I've started, welfare is a dated name, and it's got a big stigma to it. Other, like Mini Haha County and Pennington County have, and I think in Brookings. Have all changed to Human Services, but obviously that wouldn't work in Watertown, because we have the Human Service Agency, and so we can't use that, so we had to come have a different name than that. As we talked about last month, the Cuddington County Community Services really reflects the work that we do. Even, it it was even when we were doing the grant with the. Watertown Development Company, he even made a comment, well, I don't really want welfare in this, because that is for the business community, when you said, start saying you have the welfare involved, that that gets to be a tough sell. And so those are the types of things that we're running into, just needing to do more of what we do. So the chart that you have on the back, it just lays out more of the work that we're doing. The indigent support would be the welfare portion of the work that we do, and so that's really that leg of the work, where the last resort, emergency assistance, and that's what state mandated for the work that we do. The Impact Program then is the community health worker and the case management services, and this is the work that we're doing to really try to. Prevent people from needing indigent support, and this is what you guys as commissioners have done a fantastic job recognizing that if we can help people. Before they get to that need, then we can break the cycle and change the system, and so that's really the work that we're doing. Through the Impact Program, and then the collective impact is the other community based work that I've been leading, and that's what Angela is helping support in in doing all of the other pieces, and so. You can see that, like, we no longer just do welfare, you do a lot of other community based stuff, and that's really our our role and our goal now, and that's what it's evolved into with the community, and so. I'm hoping, I know change is hard, and not everybody is ready for change, but sometimes change can be good and better reflect what we're doing as well, so. So I'd like to change the name to Cuddington County Community Services.
Well, I've got a couple of questions, and we talked a little previously. Um, I went down to the trenches. I talked to the people that get the welfare, that live in the low income housing, so if you wanna call it a fancy name, subsidized housing. Income based housing. The ones that I talked to, not one was in favor of a name change, zero. I asked them if they felt it was derogatory, they said, no. The name welfare is not derogatory. I asked them, what are your friends, what do you think your friends would say about this? And they said, none of them thought that changing the name would make any difference. They thought it would be more confusing to them. Now, the Watertown Development Company doesn't wanna use the word welfare in their stuff, I don't know why that is. If that's the fact that maybe if it's in their. Financial reports that they wouldn't be getting as much monetary donations figuring that the welfare money is coming from the state or the county. Uh, I can't answer that, and I don't think you can either, but I am not in favor of this at all.
Yeah, like I said, I know change can be hard and not everybody is gonna be in favor of it. My response that I have received from the community is very much that, um. Changing the name would be a positive move for our community and and would better reflect what we do.
And then we have, then we have the question of signage and phone numbers, listing changes and. Stationery and et cetera, et cetera. Uh, it's, can be quite a list, so I've got a lot of reasons why I'm not in favor of it.
Yeah, and Carrie and I have worked to put the list together, I forgot to grab it before I came. The biggest thing that would be the expenses is a sign on our windows, we would have to have um sign pros come back and put new vinyl. Uh, that would be it, we don't pre-print any of our um paperwork, the only thing we do have pre-printed is some envelopes. And we have about a quarter of a box left of envelopes, and so that would be the other expense and our business cards. So those would be the expenses associated with it, we would have to do some, I mean, obviously change the website, um. Google, those kinds of things, we would have to do some updating with that, we do have a list ready to go of what we need to do.
Well, of the, of the twenty-six counties in the state, how many of them actually go by the welfare office? Most of them do, don't they?
Yeah, but most of them don't have a dedicated office, so most of them that have, of of the ones that have a dedicated office, um. Most, like, like I said, Sioux Falls, Rapid City and Brookings have all changed their names, they're the ones with the, with an actual office. Um, and I, I don't know where other counties are with it, with changing the name. Across the country, it would be a different story.
Uh, I know, um, I got a little bit, I share Commissioner Waterman's concern about the cost, I'm. I'm, I kinda like the idea of the name change in general, because, you know, the word welfare, I mean, it's, it's in state stat- statute. On the one hand, I like the fact that, you know, it's associated with local level, I mean, that's where, that's kinda where the rubber meets the road. I mean, that's why it's in in state statute, and uh, you know, with the the counties do welfare basically, or what we're, what we call welfare nowadays. Um, but on the other hand, I see, you know, I guess I I can see it both ways, you know, from what Commissioner Waterman says, what you say as far as the the name. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm open to the change. Do you have any idea like how much it's gonna cost to do the sign, or is that something that we could?
Um, less than a hundred dollars.
Okay, okay.
Because, yeah, we just, we just have to add a couple of things, yeah, so it'll be less than a hundred dollars.
Yeah, right. Sir, sir, just in a motion. Uh, I make a motion that we leave it as the same. Yeah, motion for. Oh, do we do, we actually really don't need to take a, take a, take action then, is there, I mean, would there be a motion to, to? To to uh, do the action that's in the, on the agenda to change the name? Well, the the chair will make the motion to change the name, sir, a second. Okay, here in a second, so I guess the motion dies.
It'd be something that I could do some research and community, get some community input and bring it back in the future.
I I think it's okay.
It'll be good.
Yeah, that would be helpful, I think, so. All right.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Or then, but do you have the, the next one, early learner, number nine, early learner community, so.
Um, this is just that we would become a partner in becoming an early learner community. Um, there's no financial thing, this is just, the city, um, in order to become an early learner. What this is, is just that we as a community would focus on becoming, um. More child focused, um, this is kind of a formality piece of it. The city is also working on becoming a partner in this, and and basically, they need to have. In order for us to commit as an early learner community, they need to have three partners, and so we're working with the city. It would be the county again as part of the childcare action team, and, um. The, we're working with the third one, I don't wanna say anything yet because I don't have any kind of commitment from the third one yet. With that, and so this would be that we as a community would be committed to, um. Improving the lives of children in their community as an early learner. Again, this is part of our childcare action team, this is where they have identified they wanna start with their focus. What this will do is give us um a framework that we can use to address. Um, childcare needs in our community.
Is, um, I mean, obviously childcare is a big, a big issue in the community, um. Can you give us a, 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 a kind of idea with the framework? I mean, if you were to say a framework, what that would look like.
Yeah, it's, so there's actually like a long extensive chart, and I um could have had Audrey, I should have had Audrey come and talk with me about it. Um, it, the framework goes through, like, what are, how are we working together? What areas of need do we see for keeping children safe in our community and emphasizing that we have our. Education in childhood is important, um, and so what are we doing to help children be successful early in life? And and so it really is, it's a pretty exhaustive, hmm, several page assessment. Tool that goes through, and then from that, it's basically a strategic planning process. And then that strategic planning process helps us identify where we start, um, and what areas we need to grow in for.
And.
For as a community.
Okay, and then, so basically, um, when we're talking about a commitment from from our end, is it mostly committing your, your offices? Time and effort to, to facilitate this mostly, is that?
Um, no, so this would be again through the childcare action team.
Right.
And so Audrey, um, with the county extension, um. Office would be the one that would actually be the one leading this, she would lead our community through it. We're just saying that as a county, we would support this effort, and we will be part of this effort, but I will not be the one leading it.
Okay, okay, so, and then as far as strategic planning, you're gonna pay a consultant, is somebody gonna pay a consultant, or is that more just?
It's not, it, so the early learner community has, like, they will, they will lead that process. And then there is potential that they might have funding available through that process once they go.
They have enough expertise in in-house, I guess, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so there is, there's no cost to it, there may be some funding opportunities in the future.
Okay.
Well, I'll move to uh have the chair sign the memorandum of understanding.
So a motion by Johnson to uh.
Second.
So a second by Waterman, so to have the chair sign the MOU, it's in front of us, on becoming an early learner community, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We'll say no, that motion carries, thanks. Okay.
Thank you, so.
All right, so number ten is discussion possible action to approve a proposal with Banner Associates Incorporated for engineering services. For Coney, cutting the county road twenty, regrading project.
Good morning.
I brought Noah along, I'll let you in, let him introduce himself, who he is.
Uh, I'm Noah Zucker, I'm part of Banner's Transportation Department, uh, Waylon, our Transportation Department head. Uh, couldn't be here today, and he sends his apologies, but uh, he sent me to answer any questions that you guys might have about the regrading project. And uh, I'll do my best to answer those questions, and if I can answer those questions, I'll bring him back to Waylon or his nobody is at the. End of the packet, so.
This project has been on the five-year plan for quite a while, Mr. Small had put that on there. Long before he'd left, and we're finally getting to. See things brought up, and this is a budgeted item for next year, but we need to get going on it now to uh. So they can get surveying and we can get it, everything put together so it can be bid this spring, or next spring, I should say.
And the the cost, so for for your, um, services, engineering services, it's age of seven thousand at the end. On the last page, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And how many miles are, miles of road are we talking here for this, two, okay?
I, I just got a question, since I live out in that area. Is there any long term, when we're talking about redoing this road, that the base would ever be good enough? If somebody was gonna tar from the Bemis all the way onto the Foley Road?
Yes, the, this is to get it built next year and then paved the following year.
Oh, it is.
Yes.
Okay.
How many miles is that?
Two. Yep, it's from Highway eighty-one over to our county road eleven, south of town.
Foley Road.
To the Foley Road, yeah, well, it's got a bunch of different names, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion questions?
Is it, is that really in bad, I haven't driven on it, is it bad shape, is it really bad?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's like a lot of our uh county gravel roads, it's gotten beat down into the ground.
Yeah.
And there's probably three quarters of a mile of it right in the middle, that is a bugger to plow snow in the wintertime. Cause there's a big hill from east of the intersection at the mile line, would be four fifty-fourth, I do believe. From east of there, all the way up over the hill going to the west. It's just a snow trap. So, like I said, Mr. Small had uh. Put that on the five-year plan. A couple of five-year plans ago, so.
But I know there's, I just gotta comment, there's, there's a lot of low.
Yes.
Water moving through at least two spots on that two miles, so I don't know what the. Obviously, that's what you guys are looking at, to make sure that we get that drained.
Yep.
So that doesn't, cause I'm sure those low spots is where it is so soft that it's really causing issues.
Yep, and they'll be all, cause there's a small box on the east mile, and it's just culverts on the west mile. And uh, all those will be taken out and new stuff put in. That's, it's, it's a total regrade job, culverts, regrading everything, so.
This is a, this is an expensive two miles.
It's, everything we do is expensive, Charlie.
Yeah, there's nothing you could do about it, no.
It's, it's not your fault, it's not Banner's fault, it's the, the lay-in land.
And that's part of my looking into the future, I'd like to do more of these miles. You know, paving one year, regrading the next, you know, not for every road to be paved, but. Like north of Charlie's place, there's a road in there that uh. The snowplow had like miles of wind roads, snow that was eight feet high last winter, but. Needs to be regraded, cause it's all just beat into the ground, you know, from. Farming procedures have not gotten any smaller, and they're not going to get any smaller, you know, cause almost when these roads were built. Was back in the fifties and sixties, and our pickups are that big now. You know, so.
Well, primarily, as I was saying earlier, somebody here today. One Sixtieth.
Hmm.
From County Road seventeen or four fifty.
Yep.
Going east on one Sixtieth. Was.
It was a map. Going west, from County Road seventeen going west, that was really, that's, that's worse. There's not much difference between the road and the field.
No, and then going east ain't a whole lot better to that.
Yeah, but at least once, there's a little bit of grade there.
It's, this is really, it's, as fun as this is, we need.
Yeah, I'm sure you did.
Is there, uh, if, you know, if we wanna do this, we need a motion in a second.
I move that we proceed with the.
Okay, so a motion by Schwer.
Second.
Second by Waterman. Um, any other discussion?
Now, the eighty-seven thousand, that's just not to exceed, this is for engineering thoughts.
Correct.
But to rebuild it, what are we talking about?
Well, I budgeted, I, no, I budgeted almost a million dollars to do this project, that's engineering, culverts. Hopefully, if if we have to purchase any right away, we have enough, I have enough budgeted in that, so.
Now, I, I don't. I live north town, so I don't drive that, how, is that really heavily traveled?
That road can take you all the way from Bemis to Tar. Except for that two miles, you go east or west, excuse me, go south, this will take you all the way down to. You can get over to Highway twenty-five using that road, so.
But you didn't answer my question.
Yes, it is, yes.
Is it heavily traveled?
Yeah.
Now, I, you know, and I, and, well, you know my situation, where I live up north, when we talk about heavily traveled.
Yeah, it's not that.
I mean, you know, this is my concern, we spend that kind of money, and you say it's heavily traveled, but you go up. In my neck of the woods, and that's heavily, heavily, heavily traveled, I mean, big stuff.
Have they ever run a traffic count on that road?
Though, that's something that will get done through this process. And I'm sure there is a traffic count somewhere, I just haven't seen it, so.
Maybe it's in Rick's lockbox.
That could be, could be. Yep.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We'll say no, okay, that motion carries, right.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, thanks, Rick, thanks.
Okay, number eleven, action to approve the orders account with the treasurer.
All right.
It must be registered deeds.
You have that information in your packets, uh, the total cash on hand at the last business day of October. Um, also then, in the general ledger, uh, for the restricted accounts, the schools, the township, the cities and towns. Those amounts that are allocated to those different entities. And then the second sheet, obviously, is just at the last day, what everything was on hand. And then the register deeds amount for October was thirty-five thousand seventy dollars and sixty cents.
Move to report, approve the report.
I'll second that.
Someone Johnson, second by Schwer, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We'll say no, that motion carries, right, and then uh, number twelve, action to. Approve the renewal of county liquor license applications.
Okay, we have been receiving those, so, um. The amount that we get on the retail on sale liquor license renewals is eight hundred and fifty dollars. And then the retail on off sale for the wine and cider is five hundred. Um, so with the class A on sale liquor and Sunday liquor located uh nearest municipality. Sisitun Wapperton Sioux Tribe DBA Dakota Sioux Casino, Robert and Brenda Vektor DBA Country Road Barn LLC. David Bludorn DBA Rooster Bar and WJ Schmidt Enterprise DBA South Fork Lounge. And then the on off sale wine and cider Sisitun Wapperton Tribe DBA Dakota Sioux Casino and Joy Ranch of South Dakota.
I'm uh. Assuming there's no.
No.
No, uh.
I was in touch with the sheriff and no, there was no issues, so when I started the process, I contacted him and let him know that this was going on. So nope, he had no issue with any of them.
Love to approve.
Motion by Johnson, sir, second.
Second that.
Second by Schwer. Uh, any discussion, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll say no, that motion carries. Hey, note disclosures for the Thanksgiving holiday, November twenty-third and twenty-fourth. Um, and those are, same for the state, um. And then number fourteen, action to approve abatement application.
None today.
So, and, but we do have some claims.
Yes, and that, you have that package um in front of you, or all the claims in front of you. I went through after I sent them out, and S D M L for each of the departments. Comes due this month, so you'll see some of those larger amounts in there for S D M L. Um, and that is based off from number of employees and wages, so that's how those. Um, amounts, renewal amounts are figured. And then the sheriff got their vehicle, I'm kinda skipping around here on you guys, but um. And then the payment to the. and then the payment to the construction for the county park
Hmm.
that came out of there, so those are some of the larger amounts that you'll see. Um, weed, their Kubota came out this month. I don't know if there's anything else that any of you noticed that you have any questions about. Otherwise, the total amount um, actually, I'm gonna mention, so we had one that needed to get paid. They came in like after these were determined. Um, it's for the jail. It is with Gallagher in the amount of thirteen thousand eighty nine dollars and twenty nine cents. So that's not in with your claims list. If you want to separate it out or if you want to take it as one motion, but it's their license that it's an annual renewal of a license, so.
So what's?
We just added that in, but.
What's the amount again?
Thirteen thousand eighty nine dollars and twenty nine cents. Uh, so that's not included on this total amount of one million seven hundred ninety four thousand four hundred thirty nine dollars and seventy nine cents. And then I wrote on there, the state pass through amount is five hundred fifty dollars, five hu- five hundred fifty thousand five hundred ninety seven oh three. So then the county actual amount is one million two hundred forty three thousand eight hundred forty two dollars and seventy six cents.
Plus the
Plus the thirteen
Eighty nine.
Eighty nine twenty nine.
Yeah. So I I think we can take that as one motion. Um and is there a motion by Waterman?
Say it.
Second by Johnson to pay the bills. Any other discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 We'll say no. That motion carries.
And there's
Automatic budget supplement.
None today, no personnel changes, no travel requests.
Correct. Kind of a quick finish. All right, and any uh public notices? We've got the um farm business banquet is a possible place for a quorum of commissioners that is November thirtieth. Um, Sarah mentioned the nonprofit um forum at the GOS. Uh, that's after, that's, that's, I think about the same date. I'm not sure on that. But it's uh at the end of November, so we'll have to get the date on that. Um, we do have a uh County Justice Advisory Committee meeting scheduled on the fourth of December at five thirty. That's probably going to be in the courthouse. I'll get, I'll get back to you guys and to to everybody. So that's the fourth of December, five thirty. Um Commissioner Van Duzen and I are on that committee, but you, I know other commissioners want to come, so that's, it's pretty likely we'll have a quorum at that one. So any, any, any other calendar items? Okay, how about number twenty, old business? New business, number twenty one. Anything for the open?
Uh, the only thing coming up right after Christmas or right after Thanksgiving is the holiday lighted parade of Water Town.
Okay, yeah. Okay, that's good. So I I did on on commissioner comments, um I did have the opportunity to take part in the uh, yesterday we had the meeting for the South Dakota Association County Commissioners, um, the board um, to talk about legislative priorities and uh they brought in a few legis legislators from uh, not from, not from our district or our area, but just to give us a sense of you know, what what they were thinking. Um, and it it focused around the discussion of the uh, the summer study on county funding and a little bit on the UJS Unified Judicial System on court appointed attorneys, so that the general sense, um, you know, they're talking, they're talking about things that would cause, you know, looking for cost efficiencies, you know, whether or not the state should help in a number of areas like veteran services, emergency management, um, court appointed attorneys or indigent legal services. Um, and so that's going to be an issue, number one, balancing the budget, um you know, for the, at the state level, how much money can they afford to to put towards those efforts? And then there's kind of a general sense that, you know, where where counties can work together and pool resources, that's a good thing to do. The only proposals that were written out though were ones where they said, well, this, the state would take on, say, veteran services or emergency management and nobody, we didn't you know, as as the the board, we didn't like that idea. Um, so we still like it, like our local control if if this on the other hand, you know, there, there could be a need for counties to work together. Um, you know, where where it makes sense, you know, whether it's veteran services, I know you know, we we already do some of that kind of informally, same thing with the man, emergency management. It's kind of informal arrangements, but we do work with neighboring counties on on some of those issues. Um, there's, there was one issue on, one uh proposal to say if a county wants to build a thing together and they put it where um say it, you know, say a jail, you know, or or some building where a number of counties might work together. If you can cooperate, then um, the idea would be that the state would have some kind of a grant program or contribute to that somehow to encourage uh consolidation of of services among counties. Um, the issue though goes back to the state's budget and how much money they'll have to contribute to that probably. And then, you know, a lot of the details of the language and the mechanics of how something like that would work, but just to give you a flavor, that's kind of kind of what um that's one of the, that's most of what we talked about was was in that vein, a little bit on the, what I mentioned to uh to Shawna about looking at um common systems, computer systems and data, data systems statewide, um, without and trying to do it in such a way where you don't force counties to do a certain thing, um, so you can maintain that local control. So, but there, but there are benefits if, you know, at the state level especially and which could benefit other, you know, all all counties if um you can have a common picture when you're looking at you know, data, whether whether it's, you know, revenues or, you know, evaluations or whatever the thing might be, so. So that's uh, to give you guys a flavor of what I said, that was about a five hour meeting, so.
At our Sioux Valley uh meeting last week, uh down at Clear Lake. Uh, Chris from the State Office uh brought the the listing of the things that they were gonna look at.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of, yeah.
And this is, if you want to look at this, this is uh
Yeah.
the copy that they gave us and I think the one that jumped right out at at this table I was sitting at was the court appointed attorney.
Yeah.
And that was one of the the key issues, but there's a, there's full list.
Yeah, can I, yeah, thanks for mentioning that, because I I thought, I think if any of them, I think that's probably the likely one because you had two, you had both the summer study talking about that. You know, and then you had the uh UJS with a task force or kind of a working group talking about indigent legal services. And so there are two, two kind of um streams of thought. One is kind of like an insurance policy, um, where the state would just cover uh a case over a certain amount and it would be, you know, it would be scaled based on the population of of the county. So for a smaller county, the amount would be lower. For a bigger county, the amount would be higher. So it's a, you know, something like over you know, cases that cost over five thousand dollars or over ten thousand dollars or something like that, the the cost above that would be covered by the state, you know, tho- those kind of ideas. But again, that's, that goes back to the state budget. Um, and then other ones where certain kinds of cases like appeals and ABS cases would just be covered by um an office at the state level, you know, where they would, they would use their attorneys. So anyway, that's, you know, they would use their attorneys for for uh the indigent legal services for the defense, so. But yeah, thanks for mentioning that, because I I think that's probably the, the, if any idea, that's it sounds to me like that might be the most likely one to get addressed in this coming session. All right, any other, any other commissioner comments? Okay, I think we do, oh, well, we thought we were gonna have an executive session, but the person's not here.
Yeah.
So I guess we don't, any, unless anybody else has a need for an executive session.
Love to adjourn.
So.
Second.
Yeah, we got a motion and a and a second by Schwer, so this is not a debatable motion, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Let's say no, I guess we're adjourned. Thanks, Sheldon.
Sure.
Yeah.
I gotta go down and see the clerk of courts.